All right, our next spotlight is on from Harding Middle School, eighth grader Miguel Henry. He's not here tonight, I believe. He faces unique challenges that most other middle schoolers do not. Despite this, Miguel has shown true grit and continues to put forth 110% in school. When given the opportunity to use accommodations, he pushes himself to be in class. Miguel wants to participate, he's engaged, and is a good advocate for himself. In addition, Miguel is a thoughtful and kind classmate. He always shows respect to those around him and follows school expectations consistently, often modeling for others to do the same. He also participates on the Harding football, basketball, wrestling, and soccer teams. Miguel would love to be able to play sports professionally, but he states if that doesn't work out, he might try the military or college for marketing or engineering. One day while visiting Principal Johnson's office, for a good visit, not because he was in trouble, he noticed a framed letter on the wall from former President Barack Obama congratulating and recognizing students at Harding Middle School for the President's educational award. Miguel was excited and impressed by the letter and someday hopes to reach that same level of excellence. So congratulations to Miguel. All right, okay. Yashon Ferguson here began his high school journey in Jefferson's Behavior Focus Program. At the time, he struggled with defiance, insubordination, physical aggression, and noncompliance. Daily interactions were often anger-based and argumentative. These challenges began earlier in his academic career, resulting in an IP with intensive behavioral goals. Difficulties at home mirrored those at school, disrupting Yashon's learning environment. Yet beneath that tough exterior was a young man with tremendous potential. By 10th grade, Yashon began taking several general education classes, and as his behaviors improved, he worked diligently in the Behavior Focus Program to develop coping strategies, excuse me, utilize support staff, and build confidence in his abilities. His work paid off, and by 11th grade, he was taking even more general ed classes, and in 2024, he successfully exited his IP. Yeah, let's like, yeah. Now, as a senior, Yashon continues to shine. He was nominated to the Homecoming Court, is dual-enrolled at Jefferson and Kirkwood, and maintains an impressive 3.32 GPA.
All right.
Yeah, he's crushing it. This fall, Yashon spoke at the district's new teacher orientation, sharing his personal journey with poise, honesty, and confidence. He serves as co-president of the Black Student Union and is an active member of the Academy for Scholastic and Personal Success. In 2024, he received the Post-Secondary Seminar Award for his thoughtful preparation for future academic and personal success. And in 2025, he earned the Literature History Award for embracing knowledge and reflecting deeply on his journey towards authenticity. For these reasons and without hesitation, Yashon Ferguson was nominated by the Jefferson staff for this honor.
Nice.
Congratulations to all three of you. Tonight, I believe Director Newman, you have the staff highlight.
I do, I do. Tonight for our CR School Staff Highlight, the Board of Education would like to highlight Nicole Smith. Nicole exemplifies what it means to be an outstanding instructional coach and colleague. With more than 20 years of experience in the Cedar Rapids Community School District, Nicole has consistently gone above and beyond in her service to students and staff. At West Willow, her colleagues shared that she supports teachers in every way possible, whether it's sharing resources, answering questions with patience and expertise, or stepping in wherever help is needed in the building. She also creates a weekly staff newsletter, The Windy Willow, filled with practical tools, strategies, and inspiration that teachers can immediately apply in their classrooms. Her deep knowledge of technology and instruction, paired with her genuine care for staff and students, makes her an invaluable part of both West Willow and Cedar Rapids schools. Nicole is highly respected by her peers, not only for her expertise, but also for her kindness, humility, and tireless work ethic. She never seeks recognition for herself, but her impact is felt in every classroom and by every colleague she supports. The Cedar Rapids School's Board of Directors is proud to recognize Nicole Smith for her remarkable dedication, leadership, and decades of service that continue to make a lasting difference for our staff and students.
Thank you. We will move on and hear from those who have requested to address the board. Board Secretary Schulte, do we have any requests this evening?
We have one request.
Okay, with one speaker this evening, you'll be given up to five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time limit allotted. Board Secretary Schulte will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. If you've submitted a request to address the board and choose to refrain from speaking, in the interest of equality and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. To abide by the Open Meetings Law, there will be no dialogue between the board and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individual speaking. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. This board has zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Lastly, I'd like to remind our speaker that the board cannot address personnel and student matters. The board policy outlines a process for addressing and resolving concerns. We ask that speakers refrain from using personal names and information during public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speaker to state his name and address when called to the podium. Board Secretary Schulte, please call our first speaker.
We'll welcome Jacob Ert on the topic of middle school girls soccer.
Thank you. So at Franklin Middle School, this is the least important topic we're going to have all night, I'm sorry, but at Franklin Middle School, we only had three girls go out for the soccer team for girls. Now, that was fine, we combined with McKinley, the Bears, and we got to 11, and everything seems okay. But while we were playing other schools in Cedar Rapids, it was great because they only sometimes had 11, too. I know a few of the other middle schools had to combine teams. That was great until we went to Oak Ridge and Marion, and two teams come out with 30-some girls, and our girls are expected to play twice. It was just kind of demoralizing, and I was just wondering, maybe we can do something better next year to where we pool all of our resources? Because the same thing then happened at Regis Middle School, where we had to go play 30 girls, two teams, and we're expected to play twice again. We have only 11, who some of them have never played any organized ball, and it just became another demoralizing scene. And then the last game, we played a college community, which that's like an actual college, it's really nice out there. But same thing, like 30-some girls, two teams, plenty of substitutes, and our girls are just dying out there. And I was hoping that we could come up with something where we can combine the resources we have, which are our girls, are that resource, and to get them on a better start for these games, maybe something more centralized or just random throughout the district where you have the teams set up. Because as a parent, I don't mind traveling across the city because we already play ball outside of school. So we're used to traveling to different places in Marion and playing games and practicing, but it just seems like there could be a better way to do it than just say, well, we'll combine these schools, hope you get 11, and then see your girls have fun. That's all I wanted to say, maybe next year we can do something about that. All right.
Thank you for your comments. It is time for Dr. Grover Superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Garlock and the board for our staff and student highlights and to our speakers tonight. I would like to start my report with priority area number one around safe and secure learning. Very proud of this team and the ways that they are looking for proactive ways to address student engagement within our school. So tonight, a huge thanks goes to the vision of our student safety and success advocate, Miles, who is in our Safe and Secure Learning Department, and to the support of the Iowa Given Crew. Students at three Cedar Rapids elementary schools now have a new way to connect beyond the classroom. The Safe Zone Sports Program, it brings together fourth and fifth graders to stay active and develop essential life skills. As kind of alluded here tonight, it's important that we engage our students early. The program was launched this fall at Cedar River Academy, Johnson Steam Academy, and Grant Elementary School. Through the program, students enjoy a structured and safe after-school activity, including flag football, basketball, and soccer. Each session goes beyond teaching sports fundamentals by helping students build social skills, teamwork, leadership, confidence, and a strong sense of belonging. Safe Zone Sports benefits not only students, it also provides staff and volunteers with meaningful ways to engage students beyond the school day, fostering stronger connections outside of the classroom. So huge thanks to Janessa and her team for their vision, but also, we want to say again, a huge thanks to the Iowa Given Crew. I had the opportunity to speak with them, and they were just elated to support this program. And they encourage others, if you have initiatives that you are trying to fund at your schools, reach out to them, they might be able to provide some support. Priority area number two, Prepare for Life. So we want to give some acknowledgement to our students as we are preparing our students for life, and we know that Jefferson High School, and thank you to the Jefferson staff for being here tonight, as we know that they are preparing their CTE spaces in their freshman academy. It's moving ahead with promising state-of-the-art facilities designed to deliver on priority area number two. While the temporary disruption impacts current spaces, learning for our automotive students remains a key focus, and it has not slowed down. This continuity is possible thanks to an outstanding collaboration with our district's transportation team. So yes, our students are right here with us. The transportation team, they are providing the necessary space and real-world opportunities. This partnership ensures that the core of the CTE program, meaning their practical hands-on experiences, that they are still happening. And so when we are looking at our students, we do want to give a special shout-out to Mickey Dieter, yeah, Dieter Sheddick, even though I've been practicing his name, but Dieter Sheddick, and Passion Bardog. They recently worked alongside a district technician on a very critical project. They were replacing the diesel engine injectors. And just to call out, that is a high-demand career area that our kids, they're being able to support us right here. This kind of hands-on learning is essential, complex, and the students were just excited to take part in the district-wide effort to effectively supporting our logistics team. So thank you to our staff members that are part of that, our teacher from Jefferson, as well as the transportation team. Priority area number three, Partners. So as we continue to engage around our staff, as well as our students being engaged in our work, our superintendent cabinets, they have started, and so we've had the opportunity to meet with our teacher cabinet. And record attendance, I must say, I was very excited to have most, I mean, almost everybody was there, which was wonderful. We really spent some time during this first meeting, really hearing from our staff members about what they wanted to accomplish this year. I would say one of the areas that the teachers, they surfaced for us really was just the impact of substitutes and how that just really has an impact on other people having to be pulled from classrooms, and so just really they felt like that was something that they wanted to spend some time and energy on, and maybe we can come up with some ideas on how to really think that through. Also, today was extra special for us as we think about our attendance goal. We say that we want 90% of our students attending school 80% of the time, and we continue to monitor that. And so the same thing holds true with their leadership activities. And also, we have one of our student representatives that was highlighted here, Yashon. He's also a part of our student cabinet as well. With that being said, a lot of great discussions and a lot of similarities among items that were discussed with our teacher cabinet as well. So kudos to our students for being highly engaged. Students, they care about quite a few things, safe and secure learning. They are really looking for high expectations for everyone. This year, we kind of mixed up the groups where they were not just with their school representatives, but with students from other campuses as well. So that was great to kind of hear them connect on some topics when it comes to making sure that the learning environments are safe and secure, that we are providing mental health services for our students that need it, but also high accountability for others. They are highly interested in like our school lunch program. Is there an opportunity for us to move forward? We're providing different options. They talked about students coming from different cultures and backgrounds, or just students that have different dietary needs. If you're vegan, what are the options? And so that they don't want to have to leave campus, I always feel like they need to bring their foods, but they were highly, they wanted updates on the pathways program. I thought that was really wonderful. And just really thinking about how they can continue to make sure that they have information on some of the internships and opportunities, and I know we're going to hear some of that tonight. So just a lot of connections across the board. So thank you to our students for showing up, as well as for their principals and partners who supported them. And then just like to highlight America Rees Day. I know that we had lots of board members that were involved in that, as well as hundreds of parents and staff members and community volunteers who participated. This is always a fun time of the year. As you can see, we had lots of fun, and I must say, I enjoyed it myself. Thank you to Jillian for being my sidekick there. I think we did five versions of our little program across the district. Each time was different, so they kind of let improv was the way to go. It was so much fun with the students. Thank you to the board for allowing us to continue that tradition here in our district. And then just priority area number four, being physically responsible, and we know that the board has given some attention over to our elementary schools, particularly Hoover and Van Buren. And so we've been able to make that milestone of the groundbreaking activity, so thank you to everyone that was a part of that. I think the most impressive part was just seeing the community come out to support these schools, as well as, we think about the next chapter and what's happening, but what really makes being a part of this program is really being able to highlight what's special about our staff and students right now and how that's going to impact them. And so again, we've been able to really pay close attention to the costs that are coming in for these buildings and knowing that the efficiencies are on the way. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Grover, lots of celebrations there. Do we have any other board reports? Vice President Roundtree.
So you want to go first?
You go for it, and I'll fill in wherever needed.
Okay. All right, so we are both on the Core Committee for Recruitment and Retention. And so we covered actually quite a few areas, and I'm just going to go over, thank you. Okay, all right, thank you. I'm just going to go over a few of them there. I'll start with the first three or four, and then Director Byers can come in. All right, so what we talked about, one of the things we talked about is the all-core teaching positions for the 2025 and 26 school year and the overall improvement from last year. Also, I really want to highlight the principal pathway launch night is set and scheduled for November 5th. Things are about to get busy. That launch we did last year was super successful, wonderful, and I know that many of our staff are certainly looking forward to this again. So I'll go ahead and pass that on to you.
All right, perfect, yeah. So I think a lot of the meeting, we were really talking about concerns and addressing them early, any concerns our staff might have, and touched briefly on the formal agenda, but we kind of were on to all different topics. So, you know, how can we address those in a timely manner before they grow? So she talked about the teaching positions, and then also worth noting, this fall, we placed 37 student teachers with 100% requests filled, and we have 28 field experiences happening across the district currently. And then she mentioned the principal launch night. Another thing that we covered, we've already had seven just-in-time staffing interventions, which we were moving teachers and parents where needed to keep classrooms stable and safe and supported. And another date to remember, coming up on October 20th, we'll celebrate four of our own at the University of Dubuque pinning ceremony, bringing more homegrown talent into the teaching profession, something to celebrate for sure. So big takeaway is we just want to keep connecting our staff data and those just-in-time moves to sort of this bigger picture of staff engagement. And I will toss to you, Jen was there too. We've covered a lot of it, anything else you want to add in?
Nothing to add.
All right, let me just say this, are you done with that? I would just appreciate the work that HR is really doing with recruitment and retention. It's really impressive, so many things that you all have planned, and it's really at the heart of just making sure that we are taking care of the people that work for us and thinking of bright ideas too for future employees. And so you guys are doing great work there, I'm so proud to be a part of that Core Committee, and keep up the good work.
Do we know where that pinning ceremony takes place? Is that here?
I think it's here, it's in the, it's right here in this, what is the name of this right here? Cedar D. So that's where it was.
On the 20th, do we know a time?
I think it's in the foyer. Justin is pointing at something.
Yeah. So it is here, it is in this, it's here in the atrium.
Okay, on the 20th.
At 5:30 on the 20th, here in the atrium. At 5:30 on October the 20th.
Thank you.
Do we have a whiteboard in there, I think?
Do we have any other board reports?
Yeah, I also want to mention that there was a K-12 music programming. There was some talk of just strengthening that programming and addressing some of our challenges at earlier during public comments. So we have, thanks to the staff for gathering some of our vocal representatives, our band, our orchestra, and getting us all in the same room to have conversations about, you know, what are the challenges, how can we address them, and what are some solutions going forward, and let's do that collectively. So I was really thrilled to be a part of some of those conversations at our table, and I walked around, everybody was engaged. It was, there was some really great information being shared and pathways forward, so Jen, I'll let you jump in as well.
It's very solutions-focused. I mean, nobody's there really to air grievances or anything, everybody's there to kind of roll up their sleeves and talk about how we can strengthen our K-12 music program. And it was really impressive, and it was a good way to collect what our strengths, our weaknesses, our opportunities and our barriers are, and start to pull that all together and see if we can find some common patterns, we can find the short-term wins, the longer-term wins. So I think everybody there feels appreciative of the opportunity to be a part of it, and it was really, the group gets bigger every time we meet, so.
Also worth considering is maybe having, I know that we talked about in our Core Committee, just some shortages across the state in special education teachers, so maybe there's even some other subject-specific or topic-specific ways that we can convene people similar to this structure around, you know, special education, for example, and solutions moving forward. So we'll make note of it.
One of the things I noticed at the music meeting is that the rich culture as well in our music departments and the passion that our staff and our teachers really have for that. So I'm excited for what is to come. I love it that we're having these gatherings, and it's a good thing. And so, yeah, come to the next one.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the board before we move on? Okay. Moving on to our consent agenda, are there any items on which the director has a comment or question, or requires the item be pulled from the consent agenda for a separate vote?
I was going to pull 19 for a separate comment, for comment, not separate comment.
Number 19 is referring to the Pebble Projects.
Yes.
Physical Plant and Equipment Levy, so just for a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight the importance around open communication and transparency for those Pebble dollars, which stands for Physical Plant and Equipment Levy. Just as a recap or reminder, that is a voter-approved fund that really helps us pay for those essentials. So think, you know, building upgrades and maintenance and technology and equipment. So those are not dollars we can use for staff salaries or program funds in the classroom, but it is really essential dollars, and we're committed to making sure that we are being transparent about that. So you can always find, all of that information is public, all the spending and expenditures of that fund are public. You can find those in our board materials, you can find them on our district website. So our, and I want to mention that also it's guided, it's not just, you know, here and there, it's guided by an entire long-term strategic plan that we have for the district across all of our facilities, which we really keep safety and equity and efficiency at the forefront. So thank you again to the voters who allowed us to continue using these funds for really important work, and we will continue to be accountable for every dollar spent.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call due to the personnel report.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
President Garlock?
Aye. We have one item under administration, it's the approval of requests to the School Budget Review Committee for Modified Allowable Growth for Limited English Learner Excess Program Costs. It's a mouthful. Does anyone have any questions for Carla before I ask for a motion? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the request to SBRC for Modified Allowable Growth for Limited English Learner Excess Program Costs?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Tonight, we will hear from Adam Zimmerman and Dennis Becker with an update on the Iowa Big programming. So Adam, it's all yours. And Dennis?
I will be very short in my remarks and then hand it over to Dennis. I'd just like to thank this team, who really embraced their roles at Iowa Big. They've been in business now for, I think, 13 years, and have really led the work on some of the some of the programming they're going to be talking about. Dennis was there from the very beginning and has stepped into a leadership role this year. So I just wanted to say thank you, and they'll lead the presentation tonight.
Thank you. Thanks, Adam, and thank you, Board, for letting us come and speak. As Adam said, Iowa Big has been in the district for 13 years, founded by the Cedar Rapids School District, and then in partnership with College Community and Linmar. So it has been a long time where we've been doing this community-connected, project-based work, where, you know, you had up earlier, one of the priority areas is partnerships. Iowa Big has worked with hundreds of partners in our community. It is really a unique educational program in the nation, nationally recognized for a lot of the work that we have students do. Students, it is all driven by our students, so it is driven by student interest and then combine that with community problems that they see. From the very beginning of Big, we started with a simple question, what makes you mad? And that was really to get students to start thinking about what would they want to change in our community? What do they want to see that is different? And then connect them with other entities in the community to help make some of that change. You'll see some of the numbers here. So over 400 community-centered projects have been worked on, thousands of learners, or a thousand, over a thousand learners since the inception, 30-plus career industries exposed to. So we have connected students with a lot of opportunities and driven really by student interest and community need. I'm going to have Mark Madsen and Becky Herman come up, and they're going to speak a little bit about Big as well. And yeah, your turn.
We're a little bit shorter than Dennis.
Easy.
I wore my high biz sweatshirt today that Mark and I made on our heat press. In the construction world, they call this color high visibility, right? It's because so you don't get hit by cars and stuff. But that's what we were really looking for at Iowa Big is more visibility.
Can you move closer to the mic, please?
Sure thing. More visibility in our program or for our program and for Cedar Rapids, because Cedar Rapids now is the only district that has Iowa Big, and we're basically the authentic model, right? That a lot of other schools are basing their models off of. So we're going to talk about, people sometimes ask, like, what does an Iowa Big student look like? Who is an Iowa Big student? And I saw a couple of kids earlier that you guys talked about that would be great. And so that, to give you a face, those guys are the future.
Yeah, so we'll just quickly go through a few of the profiles here. Obviously, this doesn't touch everyone, but it hits most of them. So profile number one, or just a simple student, could be college or career-ready, doesn't really make a difference, who just wanted a different experience. They wanted an experience outside of their traditional walls, and so they would come to Iowa Big, and we would partner them with someone who that they were interested in touching base with, working with, and just getting some different experiences out in the real world.
Profile two, we call it Struggle Bus. If you've ever had trouble in school and it's like, man, this is not for me, this environment where I'm sitting here for 60 to 90 minutes, listening, you know, not really getting to use my hands, I want something different. And so Iowa Big is very different. You control your time. You control what you're learning about. So a lot of those things, we help them with task management and things like that. So kind of working on those executive functioning skills, that's for those kids.
The third profile student is one who is just uber creative, loves designing, loves thinking outside the box. And sometimes in a traditional model, that's a really hard thing to tap into. And so again, by allowing the students to kind of choose the projects that they want to work towards, those super creative students have the ability to be super creative and kind of follow through with their dreams.
And then finally, our AP and college track students who want to stand out more than kids across the country, right? If you think about it, I was looking up the statistics earlier today. Graduates of the class of 2024, over a third took an AP test across the country. So a third of the students that are graduating, your transcripts look just like theirs. So we're trying to give kids kind of a leg up, right? Something that can make them stand out from every other graduate when they're applying for different programs, when they're applying for scholarships. And I know we didn't put the numbers up there, but over hundreds of thousands of dollars have been awarded to our graduates from our Iowa Big program and our high schools because they have a story to tell. So it's something they can, for their common app, for any of their scholarships, all of that is hitting hard there. So we've got a lot of things.
Sorry, I'm just going to throw this in there. My daughter was one of those. She was in Iowa Big. I was not a teacher there at the time, but I saw this firsthand. We were in an admissions meeting, and the person was asking for her story, and it was the, I mean, just traditional, like, super traditional. And the guy finally said, is there anything else you want to say? And the whole time, I'm like, tell your big story. And finally, she goes, oh, yeah, I was part of Iowa Big too. And he's like, well, what's that? And so she then went into the project she worked on and the thing she participated with. And you could just see the guy was like, what? Like, I've never heard anybody do this in high school before. And so immediately, he said, we'll give you $5,000 a year if you come here. So it was a $20,000 offer just on a literal 45-second story. So it's real.
How's this work for you?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So we're going to invite Bridget up to tell her story. We put her whole story up here just so that you had it for your notes later. She's obviously not going to read off it. She's going to just talk about her experience, but you have that for later.
Hi, everyone. My name is Bridgette Charles. Before Iowa Big, I loved learning, but traditional classrooms sometimes felt limiting. I joined Big because I wanted to explore hands-on projects and really challenge myself. One of my first projects was at St. Luke's Makerspace where I 3D printed a brain model to show how depression medication affects different areas. I also made an adoption video for the Humane Society combining creativity with helping others. This year, I'm back with St. Luke's Makerspace, making a silicone model of healthy and cancerous organs, which connects to my interest in oncology. I'm also working with Crafted to help nonprofits reach the community. Along the way, I've learned skills like laser cutting, soldering, and silicone casting. And Big has helped me build confidence, especially in public speaking. Overall, Big has been really valuable. It's clarified my passion for medicine, taught me practical skills, and given me the confidence to take charge of my learning and my future.
And next up, we have Fatima Torres.
So basically, I really wanted to highlight how amazing Iowa Big is. So I think my thing, I do really good in school. Class rank four, I get As and things like that. And I think a lot of the thing I learned, because I'm a senior in high school, and I went through a lot in the, doing different classes, trying AP classes, and I've realized that I forget a lot of the things I learned after like a year, the next year, I forget everything I've learned. And I think that's really common for high school students as well, unless they're just already extremely interested in that topic. When, I think a lot of the times, high schoolers have a question where it's like, when am I going to use this in the future? Especially when taking class, they're not really interested from the get-go. And I think Iowa Big really highlights on learning, but also applying it to the real world. And I think a lot of students need to be able to not only learn these things that they're learning in the classroom, but to also apply it to the real world, so it can have meaning, more of a purpose, and it's something they're passionate about. I think Iowa Big does a really good job at helping finding opportunities for me to do that, whether it's having to write something up so I can talk to a new organization and convince them using my words and my essay, my emails. I have to write it so it can be convincing to those people for them to help. And I think Iowa Big is just an amazing thing for students, again, to help the community as well. So they're taking what they're learning and applying that and helping out everybody else as well. And that's definitely what I wanted to share. It's just a very amazing program, and I think it's helped me a lot personally with finding things that go with what I want to do in the future, and instead of being just future-ready, to be able to implement it now. Because I think every student with what they're learning, they can implement it right away in the real world, and they're very much capable of doing so.
Okay, so looking at present and future opportunities, so as you heard from these guys, both of them college career-ready, they're looking at that, they're looking at their futures, trying to figure out, okay, how am I going to get better? How am I going to be ready? And we do that with, you know, time management. These guys both talked about some opportunities they've had so far. Once they go out, they'll have that confidence. And that's really what I see a lot, is that confidence that students build while they're with us. It's, you know, at first, I'm like, hey, I'm just a high school student. What am I going to do? Well, in the end, they end up doing a lot, and they see it, and they become more confident. They meet people in the community. I'll let you talk about business and marketing. He's a business guy.
So just to connect the business aspect of it, most of our projects in some capacity are connected with businesses. So just expanding the students' networks, most of the time in a traditional classroom, that's really difficult to do unless it's just a random guest speaker that comes in or whatnot, where the students in our program, like, are working side-by-side with somebody in industry on something that's professional to them. So it just helps expand their network. We want to keep our great kids here. We don't want our great kids to, like, pack up and say, oh, yeah, that was awesome, Cedar Rapids, see ya. We want to keep those kids here, and by having those connections to our business world, I think is going to help in the long run.
And then our third opportunity, we kind of noticed there is a gap in our district in terms of cybersecurity and computer science. There just aren't a whole lot of opportunities, and it's so up and coming. So we have been partnering with different organizations in the area, like Nubaco, K-12, Grantwood AEA, the IT people there, Iowa State University, so places where they're doing this work now, and we're offering, like, video game development and cybersecurity in, at Iowa Big, just so that kids have those opportunities and projects, and they get to do competitions. And so you don't get to have that at all the different other high schools. And we're kind of that central location.
So talking about the pathways moving forward, we're not exactly sure, and I'm not even sure if you guys are sure quite yet how this is going to look. But when we were given kind of a rough draft last year of like, these could potentially be our pathways, Becky and I sat down, and just from last year alone, we started looking at all of the projects that the students had worked on. And I think we hit on, like, 95% of the pathways. We had projects within those pathways. So when we're thinking forward to our future, to Big's future, to the Cedar Rapids district future, one of the things that we really, like, stood out to us was, man, our program could be like a capstone for multiple pathways, whatever those pathways happen to be. So if a student wants that, you know, senior level or whatever experience with us, they could come work on a project in industry, in the area that they're focused on, and kind of as a capstone course for that pathway. So we're super excited about that. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, sure. And again, they can choose that traditional path, like they are now. You know, some kids, they just, they want to take, you know, a bunch of AP courses and then kind of go that route. Or they're going to Kirkwood, and they're doing an academy through Kirkwood, which is awesome. Or there's Iowa Big. So it's just another opportunity that we have for the students in our district, which is great, right? I mean, we've, we have, we want to have more students, that we're trying to work toward having more industry-recognized credentials, which are IRCs. You probably, I don't know if you've heard, the state has been throwing that around a lot, but we are training for the Biz Innovator. It's coming up in November. We also will have, we're going to become a testing site for Surreport and CompTIA. So we'll be able to offer that for our students that are interested in cybersecurity and computer science. And we also can offer a work-based learning credit to all of our students. So we're able to cover a lot of bases there, and we're always, we're nimble because we're small, like, we, there's not a lot of teachers, so we can kind of change directions really quickly. It's kind of like a ship that can move quickly through the water. So we're able to kind of practice some of those things before, you know, the district decides one way or the other what they'd like to do. Okay, we wanted to thank you guys for having us today. And while I'm thinking about it, wonders, I know Dennis talked about the history of Iowa Big, but for those of you that are, just don't exactly know how it works, students come to us for part of their day, usually one or two blocks. They work on projects with businesses, nonprofits, and government agencies. And then the rest of the day, they either go to their schools, or they go to Kirkwood, depending on what their schedule looks like. So that's what we do. We match kids with their interests, and you can kind of tell by Fatima and Bridget when they talked about their stories, the things that they're interested in. And so, yeah, what questions do you guys have?
I absolutely love your enthusiasm and all the comments that you've made. I'd like, I want to come to Iowa Big.
You should. Well, and that's something, too, we wanted to extend that. We're in a new location this year. We're upstairs in the Economic Alliance. It's best view in the city, so we would love to have all of you anytime, especially when our kids are there. I think it's cool when kids see their school board members come through. So either during our morning cohort or afternoon cohort, those are the best times. So please come stop by, come talk to our kids, see what other things, like I said, you only got to see two students. We have a ton that have all different stories, so we'd love to have you.
Cool. Okay. I'll open it up to the board. Director Newman?
I'll kick us off. So first of all, I just want to give you guys a bear hug for what you do. My daughter was, went through Iowa Big as well, and similar situation where it really impacted her college admissions and what she was able to receive for scholarships. And I just got to watch her grow and her classmates, and it was, it's a great, great program. How many kids do you have enrolled in the program right now?
This year, we're at 42.
Okay.
And it's all Cedar, this is the first year we were all Cedar Rapids students. So it used to be College Community and Cedar Rapids. So Jefferson expanded, and actually, we went, we kind of switched up our recruitment tactics because in the past, it was just kind of like, hey, look in the program of studies if you see Iowa Big. And this year, we're like, you know, we got to get there, we got to talk to people. So we went to lunches, lunchrooms at all the high schools. Actually, one of our, the best things that we did, we went to Washington, and they gave us time to basically give an assembly, had some kids on stage, it was like 15, 20 minutes, and got to talk about what Iowa Big is, and we had a ton of people sign up. The biggest challenge we have right now is we have a list of over 100 kids that are interested, and because, you know, through, there was a little bit of miscommunication with transportation, kids didn't know if they could get there, they dropped off the schedule. So we got to make sure we have everything lined up, and we hope that'll double or even triple in the future.
Are any of those 42 full-time Iowa Big, or are they morning cohort and back at their sort of mothership in the afternoon and vice versa?
They're either morning or afternoon. We don't have any full-timers right now.
Okay. Thank you.
So I am glad to hear you say that you guys do like an assembly or something, because when my kids were in this district, I didn't know about Iowa Big. There, it seemed to be select children who were privy to that information. So I want to make sure that all kids have the opportunity to be a part of that, if things line up, the transportation, and some of the things that you mentioned, because that's important. I wasn't happy with that. I did not know about Iowa Big until after they had graduated. So making sure that that is open to whoever is interested is very important.
We 1,000% agree with you.
You agree? Awesome. Okay. All right, let's do it, yeah. Let's make it happen. Thank you.
Can you talk a little bit more about the transportation challenges, just so we have an idea how we could be helpful?
I think, so I think it's tough to get bus drivers in any district right now, and so I think that's probably part of the issue. And we've tried to been, tried to be nimble in terms of like when we schedule kids so that we are able to do that with the transportation schedules that exist already. I know their first priority is getting kids to their schools, right? So then, okay, so now we have kids at our schools, how do we get them to Big? And the reason we, we're kind of, we're off-campus, right? So we're in a different location, but that's so all of the kids from different schools can come to our central location, and we're with the Economic Alliance, so then they're kind of rubbing shoulders with business people, right? So that's the biggest challenge, I think, for equity, because we want to make sure that it doesn't matter if you can drive, or if you have a car, whatever, that you're able to get to us. That's, for us, is our biggest thing. There have been times where we've had to drive, you know, a kid home or something if a driver hasn't come. We were totally willing to do that, but we want to make sure we can get as many kids there as we can.
Sure.[1706.76] Do you, can you break down the grade levels that you have?
Yes. So this year, we have sophomores, juniors, and seniors. In the past, we mainly had juniors and seniors. But we opened it up to sophomores because we thought, you know, we want numbers. Let's get some kids here. Once they see it, it's going to, you know, they're going to say, hey, you guys should come to Iowa Big. As the capstone and the pathways develop over time, we think, we think that what's going to happen is it's going to be kind of a natural progression. They'll say like, oh, this makes sense to do this, you know, for my business, you know, pathway or my entrepreneurship pathway or my environmental, you know, studies pathway, whatever that is. And again, that's all part of that conversation.
OK, thank you. Other questions?
I wanted to give a shout out to Becky because you were our staff spotlight, I think, two years ago. So thank you for the work that you're doing. And to all of you. I also had like a front row seat to the start of Iowa Big and working in the original location in the Deonetrick Building. And so I remember just like learning constantly because I was witnessing the projects the kids were working on and even got to engage with the kids. And it was right when I moved back to town, I remember thinking like, wow, this town, we're really doing something here. You know, so it has such a distinctive space in our, in our district, in our curriculum. So thanks for all that you do. And then I paid you a visit in the Armstrong Center. Was that where you guys were?
Yep.
So I'm curious just how the space is working out. You know, you've been moved around a lot. So how are you feeling about the space? Is this ideal?
We love this space, to be honest. Like, literally, all of you should come. Come, come check it out. You're going to be like, whoa, this is cool. We were, we felt kind of like in the corner, you know, for a couple of years there. But I feel, we feel a lot better about where we're at now, so.
OK. And then what's the max capacity? We were kind of talking numbers with your staff, with the, kind of, where do we fall there?
So I would say probably between 45 and 50 max at a time. So in the morning and then in the afternoon. So 100, 90 to 100 is probably best. If we had another teacher that was full-time. Right now, we share an English teacher with City View. So that's a little more.
I'm going to quick follow up to that. So you mentioned the Authentic Program. I think I'm saying this correctly, Cedar Rapids. And then you mentioned Linnmar College Community. What are, are you guys still connected to those students in some way? Or kind of what are the major differences in those programs? Are there ways that we can learn from them and grow our program?
Yeah, absolutely. So at Linnmar, it's called the Venture Program. And what they decided to do was a little more curriculum-based. The curriculum director there describes it as a, like an Eagle Scout project that the students would have while in a class. So that, those are his words. And I know like Molly Prak, who we work with with AEA, she taught with Venture for a while. So if you see her around the LSE, talk to her.
OK.
But they also have a community development specialist like we do. Amanda Zorni does amazing work. We share her with, with City View. And she's the one that goes out, gets partners. When I say, hey, I have a kid that's interested in this, she's like, ooh, I know a couple of people. Let me reach out. So she's been awesome. And she's a business owner, so it's like, perfect. And then College Community is, they've adopted 3DE. And I believe we're going to do that at Washington, especially with our freshmen, and probably grow that along with the students as they get older. 3D is kind of like Iowa Big in a package that's national. And so they've, they've taken what we've done and monetized it and, but created something that is easily replicated across the country.
OK.
So it's, ours is very community-based, very local, authentic, original. That's, I guess, the major difference. That is with, they partner with Junior Achievement.
Yep, OK, wonderful. Thanks for the distinction.
Yep.
OK, Director Timinski.
First of all, thank you so much for being here. You've already gotten a shout out, Becky. But I would say this, that my son, like every time he knows that I've seen you, he asks about you. I think you are really one of his favorite teachers. So just appreciate, I think, the energy that we're seeing tonight is the energy you bring to every day and that really had an impact on my kids. So thank you. Can you maybe elaborate on the profile of a partner? So I'm curious of what are the trends that you're seeing when kids are coming? Projects that they're mad about, things they're passionate about? What are they asking for? Is the first part of that question. And then, two, what would you say to partners out in the community? This is what you should expect? And this is really the profile of a really strong partner for an Iowa Big student?
I know that we really look for partners. And Amanda, I mean, she'd be answering this probably better than I can. But we're looking for people that are understanding, right? They know that they're working with high school students that are learning. So, you know, giving a little, but at the same time, becoming that tutor or that coach or that mentor. We do, I mean, Amanda does a lot of training. We make sure we're in touch with the partner. Mark and I, or Dennis, or Amanda are in every meeting with the partners so that we're able to kind of coach kids afterwards, like after the partner leaves, like, how do you think that went? You know, kind of talk through a lot of that reflect. Kids in general want to expand their network, right? They want to meet people that are doing the thing that they think they want to do. They want to meet people that are solving the problems that they want to help solve. So I think those are the people we're really looking for. And we make sure that we don't pair kids with people that just want grunt work, right? It's, that's not what Iowa Big is. It's not, I know sometimes internships can be that way, like get the coffee, get the papers, make the copies, you know, that kind of stuff. And that's all, I think there is some value to that. But that's not what we're doing at Iowa Big. At Iowa Big, it's more student-led, student-driven. Even if a, if a project is coming from a partner into us, we still make sure that the kids have that, like, are in the driver's seat in terms of where, what direction that project goes in. Yeah.
I think a big point is like that economic line of resource that businesses have. Like, above that line, the business has to do it themselves. The stuff that's right below that line, we would love to help businesses do that work. So it's things that they wish they could do with the resources that they have, and they just don't have enough. So if they think of, think of Iowa Big as a real partner with them, with adults and students who can bring some creativity to what they're thinking about, and then kind of build up a solution for that, I think that's, that's really what we're looking for from partners.
Director Board Training.
This is awesome. Thank you so much. I love project-based learning. So I just have a question about if you have a percentage, if you happen to know offhand, if you've been trending, what percentage of students do pursue post-high school graduation education or placement? And the second part of that is, is there like a student advocate that works with students when they're like seniors and they're graduating, saying, here are your options for college. Here's, here's a place that has a program that's going to really align with what you've learned and where you've identified your idea or your area of focus?
So I'm not saying we're experts. But we do advise kids in that regard. And I, and because our counselors, right now, our school counselors have so many students versus Mark and I having this many students, you know, it's a lot easier for us to personalize, you know, that journey and what comes after. So by the time the spring rolls around, we know what every kid is planning on doing when they graduate. And it's sometimes it's been something that we've done to help them kind of get their foot in the door. Sometimes it's their parents have helped them. Sometimes they knew because of a teacher at their school. So it's kind of, we think of it as just a huge team. We're all like in their, in their, you know, in their circle. And we're trying to get them to where they want to go. I think what Iowa Big does best is we create that confidence that they might not have had, you know, just that like, I'm not really sure how the real world, well, I do know because I've gotten to talk to people that are in the community. So that confidence really kind of gives them a step up.
Awesome. Do you happen to have any like percentages on how many students go into college and how many students are employed immediately post-high school graduation?
Sure. So last year, it was almost half. And by almost half, that, that half included students that were going to both community colleges and colleges. And then the other half were either going into trades or work of some kind, like an apprenticeship. And it's not always that way. I mean, four years ago, it was totally different. It was more like 60% or 80% from years behind. So it just depends. We do see a trend, I think nationally, of less kids going to college because they, there's so many different routes that are, that are being publicized and, you know, they hear about, so.
Sure. Sure. I'm happy to hear you mention skilled trade. My other question is, so you were talking about projects that are kind of coming in to Iowa Big that are, people are saying, hey, we need some help with this. Do you guys like have like a pitch day? Where you just like throw out to all the companies and you say, hey, here's our pitch day.
Yes, yes, we do.
Can you tell me about that?
Yes, I love pitch days. So what we usually do is...
This is the thing Becky really loves.
I just really love this. We always start off with a design dash. So that's really quick. So this year, we did Design the Best Backpack. And that's a couple of days. And that's just getting kids used to each other, learning, you know, meeting each other. And then the second part of our kind of disorientation, if you will, is a, is a hackathon. And that, in that hackathon, they are coming up with a problem to solve, a project that they want to work on. And they work on that for about a week and a half to two weeks. And by the end of that time, they have this team and they pitch it. They pitched that project. They practiced a bunch of times, you know. They practiced in front of other peers. They practiced in front of us. And they, and they pitched. And this year, it was in a multipurpose room at the Economic Alliance. And then we have community partners come in. Amanda invites people from the community. They come in and they listen to the pitches that the students have. So those are what we call outbound projects. And then they also, she brings in people that will pitch the projects she's helped harvest,